This time I'll call the February 7, 2022 county council meeting to order. First of all, just like to say thank you for coming out tonight. It's always a pleasure to see such a good participation from our citizens in a meeting. I know that our thoughts and prayers go out to our neighbor who fell here tonight. But we are proud to have you here tonight. We're excited to hear what you have to say. Understand that this meeting may run a little bit differently, but if you'll have a little patience, we'll make sure that everyone who wants to be heard will definitely be heard. At this time, I'll recognize the Honorable William Bump Roddy from District Four, who will lead us in invocation and pledge allegiance.
I'm sorry. I've seen the first time. I still want to have the same thing.
I'm sorry.
Let us pray. Dear and Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together. We thank you for the great turnout here tonight. We ask that you continue to watch over us, lead us and guide us. We ask that those who are participating here tonight, respect each and every one's opinion on the items they come to, carelessly deliver.
In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I understand that we have one oath of office to deliver, so if Mr. John Gregory is here to be sworn in for the Catawba Mental Health Board, if you would please come forward. And as you approach, Mr. Gregory, I know on behalf of our council, we want to thank you for your service to the community. It is done without pay, and a lot of times, it's done without any thanks. And so, we do want to say thank you. The work of the people can't be done with volunteers like you, and we appreciate your service.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. It's my privilege to serve you, to be in the office, to unite and give you my evidence for our chair. Thank you so much. If you kindly raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
For which I've been appointed.
And I will. And I will.
For the best of my ability.
For the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We do not have any formal appearances tonight on our agenda, but I am going to recognize Allison Love from District Two, who's going to recognize some folks in the audience tonight.
So I don't know if the Boy Scout Troop found seats in here tonight, but if you did, if you'll stand up. This is the Lake Wiley Boy Scout Troop, 333, back here in the corner.
We found seats. It's like we're in the library.
Thank you all for being here tonight and welcome. And tomorrow night, they will be interviewing me on some of the things that are happening in the meeting tonight. So let's give them plenty to talk about. How about that? Thank you all for being here.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate you learning early the process as we move forward. This time on our agenda, we moved to what's called the public forum session. And what this is, is it's an opportunity for folks who get here and sign up to speak for two minutes and to address the council on any topic that they wish to do that for. It looks to me like all of the folks who signed up are not for a public hearing, so I don't have to give my spiel about you can wait until the public hearing and be heard in full. What I would ask that you do is when I call your name, if you'll approach, approach the podium, please state your name, give your address, and then you'll have two minutes to address the council. One thing I absolutely hate doing, I guess it's the southern in me, is cutting people off, but I'd have to do that. So if you would, when you come speak, at the top of the screen, it will start flashing at two minutes. And when that starts flashing, if you will please stop talking on your own, so I don't have to interrupt you, then I don't have to do that. So we'll move forward. Diana Simone. Name and address. State your name and address.
My name is Diana Simone, 1107 Market Street, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 207-29708.
Thank you.
My name is Diana Simone. I moved here four and a half years ago from Orlando to be part of Morning Star. I own a suite at Morning Star, which I rent out, and I also own my own home in York County. I am a former investigative journalist, and for two decades, I traveled undercover all over the world, writing about religious persecution against Christians. I traveled to Sudan, Zimbabwe, many trips to China, to the DMZ, and elsewhere. On one of those trips, I learned about the injustice of child trafficking. That was two decades ago, and almost no one was doing anything about it. So I left my career in journalism and started a nonprofit that today is the global leader in trafficking prevention for young children. We work in 65 countries, and it's all out of York County right here. When I moved to South Carolina and to York County, I was very impacted by the rich legacy in our county fighting against injustice. I learned about Brattonsville and went there and stood in the woods on the very ground that a small band of men and women fought in the Revolutionary War against the most powerful army on the planet at the time. And they won. And their victory changed the trajectory of the American Revolution in the South. Later, I learned about a lunch counter in Rock Hill, where nine teenagers went simply to have a cup of coffee and got arrested. Their fight against the injustice of the Jim Crow laws at the time turned the trajectory of the civil rights movement. So tonight, as we discuss this case before us, I ask you to consider the long history in this wonderful county of fighting against injustice. I ask you to please fight for justice. Please be the next hinge of history in our county, not an asterisk of history voting for injustice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Simone. Larry Byrd.
I'm Larry Byrd, 375 Starlight Drive, Fort Mill, 29715. Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. As a veteran in the United States Armed Forces and a prime member, a proud member of the Chickasaw Nation, I have not previously found a purpose, as I have now, living as a senior at Heritage Communities at Morning Star. I have been re-fired as a senior at Heritage Communities at Morning Star. And this has given me a purpose to excel and be a creative senior citizen in my last years. This is the real purpose of this tower, is to refire people, restore their creativity and purpose, and have a quality of life in their latter years by remaining very active. Although I am talking for only two minutes, we have story after story of seniors at Heritage where we live now, who would love to share their refinement stories, personal triumphs, personal growth, and their gratitude for living here. Please come and visit some of these residents. They'd like to talk to you about just how nice it is living at Heritage Communities. My wife and I moved to Fort Mill 13 years ago, and we're still waiting to move into the tower. We believe it is time to complete the tower and to allow seniors to move in to refire. There are others who are waiting to come here and be refired in their senior years. We are here to unite left and right over what was a sore subject in the county's history. I believe that there is neither better place to live as there is at Heritage Communities for seniors to have a purpose, destiny, and also community. It is time to start uniting this county.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd.
By you, York County, allowing Morning Star to build. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sharona Watson.
Hi, I'm Sharona Watson, 4033 Sherry Lane in Fort Mill, South Carolina. Hi. I know this woman who was once a recluse, social anxiety, clinically depressed, living in a wooded area, in a home, all alone, didn't really associate with anyone until Heritage Communities. I saw this same woman come alive because of all of the love and the compassion of the people that she was around. That woman is my mother. Right now, my mother is currently fighting for her life on a ventilator in Pineville Hospital. And one of the things I said to the doctor on the phone today was that my mom wants to live because she needs to go back to Heritage Communities. So I would like for you guys to consider something today, that this isn't just a building, it's just isn't, you know, a certain kind of senior-living facility. This is a place that brings life, it brings hope, and it brings love. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Dave Phelps.
I'm Dave Phelps of 8020 Huber Lane, Fort Mill, South Carolina, 29715. And thank you for this opportunity. Now, my wife and myself, we immigrated from England, the United Kingdom, 13 years ago, and we immigrated to be part of Morning Star. And my wife had been a remote student for several years prior to that. And early on, we learned of the intention to turn the tower into high-quality apartments for over 50s. And the vision then, as now, was that those apartments would be, it would be a refinement center, as you've heard before, for older people, active older people, not, certainly not a retirement home. And like many others, this appealed to us, and so we made our reservation 13 years ago. And now, it's hard to believe that 13 years on, Morning Star is still battling the York County Council. It would, one would think that the council would sort of welcome the opportunity to have this type of people in the community. Those people would be net contributors, both in terms of, both financially and in terms of contribution to their fellow citizens. I could understand the reticence of the council if Morning Star had been tardy in terms of its responsibility to prepare to refurbish the towers. But this is not the case. Morning Star has done as much as it can, as far as I can see. Morning Star is ready to go. As I understand it, contractors have been selected, and the finances have been investigated and prepared, and many people are anxious to move into the tower and have been for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
Okay, thank you.
Debbie Anthony.
Debbie Anthony, 117 David Court, Fort Mill. I came to Morning Star eight years ago from Houston, Texas. I heard Morning Star's message of refinement rather than retirement. So when I came of age to retire, I did not. I moved to Morning Star. Refinement has been better than I could have ever imagined. Because of connection that I was able to make in Morning Star's 50-plus community, I had an opportunity to teach English in the Chinese underground church. For me, this was a dream decades old that I thought was dead. Except for the time I spent in China, I've had the opportunity to work on the Morning Star staff now for almost eight years. I get to do things that I love. It feels like I'm doing things that matter. I have a hope and a future. I can't believe my life. I'm amazed. It just amazes me. There's something else that amazes me, too. There are many others like me who want to come. They want to be a part of this thriving tower community. They want to refire with us. Why are you saying no to these folks? I just don't understand. Do you? I'm a tax-paying citizen, a homeowner in York County, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Anthony. Kelly Ballary.
Kelly Ballary, 2056 Oxford Heights. My name is Kelly Ballary. My husband and I live in Fort Mill. We have two elementary school children. I'm the co-founder of a financial technology company and the author of three published books. One of my most recent books was featured on the Today Show, but this is not why I'm here today. I am here today to let you know that I love our county and to also let you know that I understand your concerns. When I drive around Fort Mill and I see the tower, it looks like an eyesore to me. I get it. Yet, to deprive this city of this tower is to deprive our children of a great future. It's not a building that makes our community, it's the people. The people who will make up this tower are much like the population in the Heritage Community. And let me tell you about this community. One man, a war hero, encouraged my husband and I, when we were about ready to give up on our company. We persevered and kept on going because of his story. Another woman, she searched high and low in her house to find coins for my son because she knew that my son was starting a rare coin collection. You should have seen my son's face when he saw how this older woman loved him like that. Another group of Heritage people also gathered toilet paper and handed it out to the community during coronavirus. Beyond this, others gathered supplies and made room to shelter displaced hurricane refugees. I'm here to let you know, to deprive families of this building is to deprive us of gaining wisdom, support, and help from wiser people that we young people need to learn from, especially in this hour. To deprive the community of this building is to deprive us of those who truly care and who want to help. This building will be comprised of those who want to make a difference, people ready and willing to help. I know this firsthand. These individuals are proactively engaged, wholeheartedly helpful, and incredibly passionate. You know, community is not a theory. It's the hands and the feet of people readily engaged to touch the community. Council members, I ask you, will you close this chapter of the book?
Thank you, Mrs. Ballary.
Let them build the tower. Our community will be better for it.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballary. Jeff Carroll.
Jeffrey Michael Carroll. My address, 375 Starlight Drive, Suite 3053, Fort Mill. Thank you for the time. This is in regards to the tower. I moved here five years ago, and I love York County. And being part of the media, a nationally syndicated talk show host, I deal in the business of headlines. And one headline that is dominating today is the headline of "Freedom." It's all over the news. So I have some questions for you today. Are you for freedom, or are you against freedom? Are you for freedom to build the tower, or are you against freedom to build the tower? Are you against senior discrimination, or are you for senior discrimination? Are you for freedom of religion, or are you against freedom of religion? Where do you stand on this issue? I want you to take some time and think about this. Take a moment, when you go home tonight, before you rest your head on your pillow, and when you wake up tomorrow morning. Our life is all about headlines and things that we do, things that we say. What will your headline be? What will your headline say? Thank you so much for your time. God bless each and every one of you. God bless York County, and God bless the USA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Zona Garrett.
My name is Zona Garrett. I live at 1526 Sandy Hill Road, York, South Carolina, 29745. I just want to thank each and every one of you for being here today and for representing us. We really appreciate your time, and we appreciate you hearing us out. I am Housing Resource Coordinator. I represent three counties in North Carolina. I recently had the privilege of being a participant of HUD's Point in Time Count that fights homelessness. And we really take a look at where those populations are that are in the most need. And one of the areas right now that we're facing, a massive, growing population of homelessness is in our seniors. This tower is a small drop of water in an incredible ocean of affordable housing that we need. As a resident of York County for several years, it is my heart and my passion to see places like this exist, where people can come, that they can be off the streets, that they can live in great community. In South Carolina right now, 44 out of every 100 households need low-income housing. This type of a place allows them to be in safe units. In the greater Charlotte area right now, our average one-bedroom unit that people can live in is over $1,300 a month. Right now, on Social Security, most people can only make just over $1,500 a month. These types of units and affordability allows us to give our people, our people, our residents of South Carolina, people that are active in our communities, that are giving back every day, and a place that they can live safely, that they can afford to live in a healthy environment. And this is a drop in the bucket of what is needed in our county in York, South Carolina. It's absolutely important that we go ahead and move forward and get this place built because this is just the tip of the iceberg of the affordable housing that we need in our community right here. Now, I represent three counties in North Carolina, but this is my home. I want to see this place thrive.
Thank you, Mrs. Garrett.
I want to see all the members of our community be successful and to live healthy, safe lives in affordable housing.
Thank you, Mrs. Garrett. At this time, we move on to committee and other reports. Justice of Public Safety Chairman Brandy Guffey.
Yeah, Justice of Public Safety had our meeting on January 24th. It was staff, myself, Councilman Winkler, and Roddy. We received an update on the Catawba Area Coalition for Homelessness from Lieutenant Frye on the progress being made and already being worked on. I will continue to speak with Lieutenant Frye and others on how to approach our growing homeless population. We also agreed to recommend the changes that have been proposed before council in regards to the Economic Development and Planning Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Guffey. Health and Environmental Protection Committee Chairman Tom Odette.
All right, thank you. First of all, good evening, everyone. We had a meeting last week, and in, at the meeting, we had Councilwoman Love and, or Councilwoman Love and Councilman Winkler at it. There were several different topics that we spoke of in the meeting itself. One of those topics was an update by Dr. David Keely, and this is regards to the health of York County and what we're seeing in York County. Out of that meeting, we are moving forward to identify a possible screening day in York County across different locations. Again, that's in the works. There is a, what they call a data walk on March 25th, which is going to be sponsored by D-HAC. We're going to look at the challenges from York County. Again, very good meeting as part of this meeting. The next part of our meeting, it was, there was an address by Watts-Huckabee in regards to agriculture and agritourism in York County. We looked at and talked about different opportunities from within York County itself. There was a request by this group in order to ask that the council would look at reinstating their committee to move forward to look at an agricultural agri-education program, and also to look at a possible engineer study, engineering study. As part of that meeting that we had, we also looked at the opportunities we have at Worth Mountain. And there is a great opportunity from within Worth Mountain that we can have a citizens' committee, which can be opened up to anyone in the community, including this group here from within Watts organization, to look at an opportunity for them to possibly do an agriculture-agritourism program on Worth Mountain or at Worth Mountain. There is a barn there. So out of that committee, we do have a recommendation that we would talk about both the opportunity to reinstate their committee, but we are also recommending that our committee would go forth with recommending that they look at Worth Mountain. We open up Worth Mountain for an agriculture-agricenter opportunity for them, and also, we would recommend them to be part of the community, committee that we are going to be forming at Worth Mountain. So I'd like to get that on the agenda for our next meeting. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Odette. Planning and Economic Development Committee Chairman Joel Hamilton.
So the Planning and Economic Development Committee met this evening prior to our council meeting. President were Councilman Odette as well as Councilwoman Love. We had a guest at our meeting this evening, Hannah Horn from the Gravity Center in Rock Hill. Hannah provided us a lot of information. She gave us a presentation about the Gravity Center in Rock Hill, which is a, whose mission it is to be a resource center for entrepreneurs within the community. So that was basically our entire meeting. We didn't take any action and deferred further discussion on the Economic Development Board changes until a special-called meeting that may occur next week.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve, but only, I would like to remove item number 13 from the consent agenda, then I'll make a motion to approve with that. Item removed.
Are there any other removals before we have a second? All right, we will move item number 13 in consent to number one in new business. We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All who favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done, motion passes. We move now to our first public hearing, rezoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 21-02, tax map number 555-0000044, zoning request to rezone from RC2 to BD1, 1.93 acres in District 2. I believe that Rachel Grothe is going to provide us with a little bit of information.
Yes, good evening. Hi, Rachel Grothe, zoning department. I'm the zoning administrator. So this is a rezoning request for 5001 West Liberty Hill Road, and they would like to go from RC2 to BD1. It is located at the intersection of Hansmill Highway 274 and Liberty Hill Road. So the request is so that an existing non-conforming baseball training facility would be zoned appropriately. So as you can see from these four different images, starting in 2009, it began with a house, and then sort of additional structures were added over time, and these buildings came forward as residential. So as you can see on the map on the left, the area around the subject parcel is zoned RC2, which is residential. And then the map on the right shows the comprehensive plan, which designates the area for single-family residential. This item was heard by planning commission at the December meeting where they recommended denial.
Any questions?
That concludes my presentation.
Any questions from council of staff before we move to public hearing? Ms. Love?
President, can you just clarify, if we go back one side, and you said that those came forward as residential, can you just explain so that everyone understands how we went from the 2009 to the 2020 pictures?
Yes, so my understanding is that they had come in for a few different permits over the years, residential accessory structure permits. And that's how we reviewed them, that's how the county looked at them, was residential. And I want to say, I believe that there were maybe one or two structures, I think, that were built without the benefit of a permit. And so, we went from 2009 to all the buildings that are there now.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, Rachel, with.
Whenever they are applying for these permits, do we not, not as staff, go out and review and able to see what is being built at that time?
So I don't know that that happened probably as much as it should have between 2009 and 2016, but our practices have changed a great deal as a result of that, and things are reviewed much more stringently and scrutinized a lot more.
Do we know how many permits were, do we know how many permits were pooled for the property?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I'm sorry.
So in regards to this location, you have no record of any requests being done for permit change at this location from residential to business? permit change at this location from residential to business at all? I'm going to make sure I'm understanding this.
Not that I'm aware of. This came to our attention as a complaint.
Okay.
From neighbors.
Gotcha. And you stated that, how many changes were made on this property that you were made aware of without approval?
I want to say, I think, two buildings were constructed without the benefit of a permit, but I'd have to go back and review the case file.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
At this time, this will be the time for folks to come forward who wish to speak on the public hearing. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezoning request, if you could please come forward, state your name, give your address, and you can make your And I will say, I understand we have a lot of folks in the lobby as well who are interested in speaking, so we'll make sure that we give time to allow for that.
Name is Kyle J. Eller. I reside at three-two-four Redberry Court, York, South Carolina. Good evening, council, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I address you today as a neighboring property owner to Mr. Brown's Team Twenty-four Youth Training Facility on Hansmill Highway. My home sits just across the highway, possibly a baseball's throwaway from Mr. Brown's property or what would have been a baseball's throw for me a decade ago, and I'm here tonight to offer my full support for Mr. Brown's facility, the property used in question, and encourage thorough diligence by you, the council, in working toward a viable solution for this issue. I find this to be a highly unique situation for Mr. Brown and the county, and I do want to take the time to thank the efforts of the Planning Commission and their diligence in serving this county. However, I also believe that this ten-thousand-foot view that the county must take with these reports can miss the essence of community that these unique situations bring to the table. The Planning Commission's done a very thorough job identifying potential concerns and issues of the property in question, and I know Mr. Brown is ready and willing to address those concerns in whatever way he can, given the various paths that this situation might take. Directly addressing the elephant in the room, we do realize that this rezoning application is an uphill battle. I'm no zoning expert and only hope to brainstorm potential options for Mr. Brown's facilities in their current state, given the chances of that approval for this spot zoning application. During discussions on the particular item, I request the council seek additional information on the commercial recreation special exception under the property's current zoning designation of RC two, and that can be found in Chapter one fifty-five, Section ninety-two, subsection four of our zoning code. Mr. Brown selflessly offers his facilities to the betterment of the community at large. His servant heart is a major blessing in the community by providing some of the most prolific opportunities for our area youth to grow, succeed, and belong. To this day, Mr. Brown's efforts have touched the lives of hundreds of York County families and is highly regarded in the athletics community. The overwhelming support in this room is a testament to Mr. Brown's outreach and impact in our community. He's been very forthcoming with the county in showing he has operated in good faith, receives no financial benefit from this operation, and seeks to work amicably with the county in finding a viable solution that can keep him in his current location. I believe Mr. Brown's case to be a very extenuating circumstance in front of the council, and ask for the council members to heavily consider the individual voices and votes empowered to them by their constituents. This facility has impacted lives in all of York County and beyond. I see the situation as an opportunity for council to proactively offer their expertise and knowledge in coming to a reasonable solution for all involved, and ultimately retain this pillar of the community in any practical way possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I live in Clover at seven-seventy Rocky Hollow Trail. How many of y'all, real quick, have been to the facility out there?
We don't mean to be rude, but we usually don't interact or answer questions, and that's the...
No problem. Well, if you haven't, I would just go ahead and say you missed it. I think a lot of, I think a lot of what the problem is too is some of you are forgetting or not looking at what value is. You're going to rezone, and there's going to be a different value. Looking at what the slide I just showed you right now is pretty much saying that it's a zero opportunity it's going to happen. I knew that before I came in the building. So, why am I here and why am I talking? I'm going to talk to you, but I'm here for them too. My dad was an educator for thirty years. The only time I would see him is if I was in the car going to a football game or a basketball game. He wasn't at home. He had us at home, but he knew mama had us taken care of. So, it was always, why are you always gone? Well, there was a lot of kids that didn't have people that would be there to cheer them on. His thing was if he did not show them what they did was important, who's going to be there to show them what's important? So, I'm here to show them that the work that they do is important. When my oldest daughter was in high school, there was nowhere around for her to play. You either had to go to Pineville, Charlotte, Gaffney. Now, in that situation, you're putting parents and kids in the car if they want to play probably fifteen hours a week, not at home, but trying to give them the opportunity to play. Well, in Sheldon's facility, you had it right here. I don't think even Sheldon Brown knew that the place was going to grow the way that it grew, but people around here were like, you mean I don't have to drive all week and I can get almost professional, if not professional, instruction for my kids? Now, they had it. I understand that whether or not, you know, you zone or not, we're going to try to do everything we can to give them an opportunity to play, but you're talking about hundreds of kids now to where they come in, they're not on TikTok, they're not on Facebook, they're not on Instagram, it's instruction. The place is open twenty-four-seven. He has full access, he has cameras, he knows when everybody's there. It's pretty cool to see a parent walk in with their kid at seven o'clock at night just to throw him a ball, just so they can work on their craft and try to get better. We have a kid, and I'll say her name, her name's Kami Landers. If you do nothing else, remember that child's name, because if she doesn't do anything in softball, she'll change the world around. I promise you that. When she first started playing for me in softball, and I'm going to speak about softball because I champion the girls, she, athletically, she really wasn't that gifted, and she knew it. She struggled, she didn't get a lot of playing time, but you can talk to Chuck, you can talk to any of these parents to see her with her dad in that facility every day, every day, and her work ethic has surpassed a lot of athletes. And that seventh grader just made her JV team at Clover High School. There's nowhere else around here that you're going to find what Sheldon Brown does for these kids, nowhere. I think that a lot of it too, when you look at those slides, you kind of portray this image of him trying to get around the rules. But if I say nothing to anybody else in here, then I want you to understand, it's not your job and it's not your right or anybody else's right in here to assign another person's motive. So, if you make a judgment based on what you think his motive was, then you're just wrong. You're just wrong. I teach my kids the same thing. You have to look at the value. This is the most important, I think, resource that we have in York County, is these kids right here. That's it. Now, you'll put value on a property that's probably less than a mile away of two hundred thousand dollars an acre that y'all purchased. What about them? What about them? Where are they going to go? Outside of Clover? There's nowhere else for them to go. Look at all the parents. Every one of these parents, Chuck, this guy right here, he doesn't even have a child that plays, but he's here every night for them kids, for the girls especially. Every night, he's in there pitching, doesn't even have a kid that plays. This is not an organization of a bunch of professional athletes coming in to, you know, charge god-awful amounts of money to teach these kids to play. The parents are the coaches. It's all the parents. You have instructions that come in, but it's all these parents in here that are coaching, me included. My daughter just showed up to the meeting, she's standing right there right now. She also is a seventh grader, just made the high school team, and we didn't have to go to Pineville to do it, we didn't have to go to Gaffney to do it, we did it right here in York County, right here in York County. So, take away what you think the motive is, place value on what's here now. We want to do more, we want to do better. Whether he knew it was going to be what it is now, I'm thankful, thankful that we have what we have, to be able to take the kids, show them that we value what they do, so they can keep doing what they do and represent York County, whether it be the eleven-year-old boys going to Cooperstown this year to play in Cooperstown, New York. All that's right here in York County, and I don't want it to go nowhere. I don't want it to change, but we'll do if we have to do it. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lesmeister. Anyone else who wished to speak in favor of this rezoning?
Counsel, my name is Leroy Johnson. I'm a United States veteran, disabled veteran. I'm looking at this map, my house is right next to Sheldon's property, and kind of looking how it did develop over the years, and I've watched it develop, watched it turn into a lot of things, meaning the sense that my son played baseball in the county, and that was prior to Mr. Brown even building this facility. And it was Lake Wiley League, and I watched it grow, and then I watched it disappear. In a short amount of time, I watched him build where a lot of kids would have had no place to go and no place to learn. You know, I seen a lot, you know, and some of those kids now are teenagers, and they greet me and they treat me with a lot of respect because, you know, if anyone can complain, I should be the one complaining. Balls fly in my yard, kids come in my yard, but all of that, I think, is the important thing about a community is having kids and seeing, you know, seeing them develop. And to the gentleman who said that it's open twenty-four hours, it's not open twenty-four hours. And again, if it was a nuisance or if it was a bother, I would be the first one to complain because there's a lot of other things that go on in the county that if I had time, I could complain about that, that goes, you know, but the root of the matter and what I see is, you know, yes, it probably developed a lot more, but at the same time, that's what you want in the county. You want people to pour their time and money, which, you know, I look in this day and time when everybody struggles of what they can do and cannot do, you know, somehow these parents do make a way to get their kids there every day, you know, so I think it's a great thing that he's done. You know, I would love to see it grow, you know, and I don't see it always being there, and that's my honest opinion because every day a child is born, and that area, Hansmill on the lake, I mean, you know, I used to walk down there and there was nothing. Now, I go down there and there's multiple homes, which means multiple kids. So, you know, I look at it as a benefit for the county. I'm a neighbor, you know, I've adjusted, you know, to a lot of things, and not just that, the road, the traffic, not his traffic, but just the county traffic. You know, it's an issue not with him, but it's an issue now with me pulling out of my driveway just because the development of the road itself. So, you know, I know everyone doesn't agree with me in that neighborhood, but there's probably ninety-nine percent of those people that ride by there every day and look at kids throwing baseballs, and that's what I mean, is kids, it's not just boys, it's girls. And to me, I grew up in a neighborhood where you had to find a place to play baseball, where you had to find a baseball to play baseball. So, I have no complaints. I'd love to see it be approved. If he needs to make adjustments, you know, hey, I don't think he's not willing to do it, and if there was ever any issue about money, that he was profiting or whatever, believe me, I'm a close enough neighbor that I speak to my neighbor, I talk to my neighbor, and I've watched him pour money into something that the reward is, and no one ever might see it, is that he gets to see himself. He gets to see that kid or that child that got to play sports to find that way out, whatever it was, just like he said, not pushing a phone or a button, you know, so maybe this isn't the ultimate place for what he's doing, but it is a place until the county or whoever comes up with something else. And I appreciate your time, you know, to the parents here. I think, you know, I didn't think it would be what it is as far as your support, but I see you every day. So, you know, I hope this is an open mind to the county that, you know, it's more of a plus than a negative. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Olivia Lingerfelt, three-eighty North Burris Road. I want to start off by saying how much I appreciate all the coaches at T24 and all the time they spend with me. The first time I walked into T24, I just turned nine, I'm fourteen now, and I can't count how many times since then I've had to say, I can't, I have softball. Want to go to a party? I can't, I have softball. Want to go ride around? I can't, I have softball. T24 has kept me too busy for all that, too busy for any trouble, kept me active and kind of healthy. The location and our practices are an inconvenience for some people, I understand that, but the good things that come from T24 are much bigger than that inconvenience. Where I come from, we meet in the middle somewhere when there's a problem. We should try that instead of taking steps to have my second home shut down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why Team Twenty-four is important to me? Team Twenty-four is important to me because it gives me a chance to play baseball. Also, hopefully someday at a higher level, I've, also someday at a higher level. I've learned a lot from my new friends and great coaches, and I've gone to live, gotten pretty good myself, and I've learned leadership. I'm thankful for Coach Sheldon for starting Team Twenty-four. I would like to be as successful as him one day and give back to the community like him. Please don't take away Team Twenty-four from us.
Thank you for your comments. Can you please tell us your name?
Bryson Gibson.
I'm sorry.
Bryson Gibson.
Good evening. My name is Reginald Key. I reside at three-two-nine Redberry Court, York, South Carolina, two-nine-seven-four-five. I live directly across from this facility, and I recently relocated from the Chicagoland area. I'm a minister, and I've worked in my former communities, I've worked with local churches, council boards, council members, and the community to do what's best for the community. And I recognize when I see the heartbeat of a community, and I see it, I saw it tonight, not just in regards to Sheldon Brown and what he's offering as a free facility, but in the voices that have spoken up about homelessness and senior citizen advocacy. And when you, laws are necessary, but legalism is not. Laws allow us to know where the guidelines should be for things, but legalism takes those laws and chokes out heartbeats in communities. When you look too much from the law, you begin to ignore when you see the spirit of God moving, and I observe it and I saw it here tonight. Legalism quenches the spirit of God when it's moving. This community is drawn together. It's an honor to be in front of you, but it's more of an honor to be with this community and people who I don't even know, but I recognize the spirit of a community, and I recognize when a spirit, when a body is coming together to work for a vision, to work for a mission that's bigger than the individual, that's bigger than the law. And I see that in this facility that Sheldon Brown has made available to him. I see his heart in how he has left this facility open to whomever needs it, whenever they need it, and it would be of detriment to the society, it would be of detriment to the students here, to the athletes, it would be a detriment to the parents to be short-sighted by legalism. So, I would just, I would just ask you to reconsider, I would just ask you to give the proper time. You can see that he meant no ill will in what he built and what he allowed to grow, and just afford him the opportunity to get into the zoning that's necessary that allows this facility to stay open. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in favor?
Hi, how are you doing? My name is Alan Gregory. I live at fifty-three ninety-eight Hudson Road in Lake Wiley. I've been in this community for eighteen years or more, and I have known Sheldon Brown for at least ten of those years. This is my youngest son. This is my youngest son, Colton, and I have an older son, Maverick, who has played basketball and baseball through rec on up into the T24 organization. I started with Sheldon back probably a little bit after 2009, when there was not much there, and watched it grow and watched my oldest son Maverick grow along with it. Now have the opportunity for Colton to follow along in those same steps. He's been playing baseball since he was eight years old and planning on heading to Cooperstown, New York this year to play in the tournament up there in June. It has been an amazing opportunity for my kids and my family with what Sheldon has provided for us. Just to cut this short, I would appreciate it if you would keep that going for my kids and everyone else's kids in the community that this touches. Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Tom Bazziniano. I live at 116 Mariners Bluff in New York. This is my son Dominic, he's 12 years old. He plays with Colton. We've been part of the T24 organization since 2017. And I definitely won't be as articulate as some of the previous speakers, but I do wanna reiterate some of the things they were saying about this organization and what that facility means to so many kids. He wants to speak too. I can't say enough about Sheldon Brown and the opportunity that he gives these kids. And it's all from a selfish place, right? Professional football player who can do anything he wants, right? And, and the amount of time that he spends, I often wonder if he sleeps. Because the amount of time he spends and the things he gives back, not for any kind of profit. It's, and, and the opportunity these kids have to come in and perfect their craft, to train, to work out, to build camaraderie. But the facility transcends that, because it's not just about baseball. It's about life lessons that he is teaching and the people that he, that, that work with him there and the life lessons that they're teaching these kids. How to work hard, how to be a good teammate, how to be a good person. More importantly, how to give back to the community. And these are the kids that are growing up and are gonna go to the high school and they're gonna go to college. And he talks with these kids about that at 12 years old. I could only wish that I had that opportunity when I was his, when I was my son's age. So I, you know, driving up and down Hansmill Highway, I, you know, there's a lot of commercial buildup going by there. And to me, the T24 facility is in keeping with, with, it's just consistent with what's going on there throughout our community. And I would just ask that those that are not for this would rethink the impact that it would have on some of these kids. Do you wanna talk? Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Ramon Lopez, 2724 Runyon Court. I moved here 15 months ago from Fort Lauderdale. And it was a tough decision, but I wanted to get out of Florida, see the country. As a veteran, I moved a lot. The one thing that made, made me do good in the military, it was a sense of community. Everywhere I went, every two years, I had a community that I could fall back on. When moving up here, my kids asked me for one thing, baseball. We're from Puerto Rico originally, so baseball is in our blood. We play baseball, he plays since he's two and a half years old, my 15-year-old plays. And we honestly were gonna move to North Carolina. And one day we drove by and we saw T24. And my kids say, Pop, look for a house in that community. So we went in Hansmill and found a house, just because of the T24 facility. That's the main reason I moved to this community. As you could tell by my accent, I didn't know if it was gonna fit in, I'll be honest. But the first night, we went across the street and we spoke to Sheldon. From the first night, he welcomed us into the community. He introduced us to everybody, and the community we have built is all because of T24. So the group before us were talking about the later stages in life, how we need to have a community for our retirees and people of older age. We need a community for the younger kids too. A place that they could go, a place that they could hang out with their friends, hit the ball, throw the ball, watch a football game on Sundays because Sheldon puts a game. So instead of playing Playstation at home, I'm delighted when my kids tell me, take me to the, to the facilities. I drop everything I'm doing and I'll take them to the facilities. It's right across my house. I don't have to drive to Pineville, I don't have to drive to Rock Hill. It's two minutes from my house. So it'll be, it'll be tough for the parents to have to get out of work, get their kids, drive them 25, 30 minutes to another facility to build a new community to belong to. So I'm not an expert on zoning. I saw that it's 8 to 1 denying the application. I hope that you listen to us, to our kids. Again, the first group said one thing that I, that it kind of hit me. They said, the building is an eyesore. I haven't seen the building, so I don't know. But I don't know how many of you have driven by T24. Sheldon Brown is there 24/7 working. I take my kids to school at 6 o'clock in the morning and he's doing something there. I go home at 8 o'clock at night, he's doing something else in there. So it's not an eyesore. It's actually very, a very beautiful facility. When you look at other commerce around the highway, they just built a TSC Tractor Supply Center right across another big community. I mean, that's for people to go spend money. Here we're going to have our kids develop leadership skills, develop baseball skills, friendships. Again, I ask you to reconsider, because that's a community I know. That's a community my kids know. So if we have to go somewhere else, my kids might say, you know what, let's just move closer, because it's more convenient for you. So again, I wanna say, Sheldon, thank you, because you welcome our kids, you welcome me into the community. It would have been much harder to do without you there. Because from day one, he called me and he built the community for us that we were looking for. So I please ask you to reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else who wish to speak in favor?
Good afternoon. My name is Kayden Kewing, 297456755 Pine Forest Drive. I would, I would say that I am probably the newest member of the Team 24 baseball. And it has definitely given me a better opportunity, because I don't think that I would be where I am without Sheldon Brown. He has made a great influence in my life. He's definitely a person I look up to. And as one gentleman said, he could be doing anything with his time, but he's spending time with kids and he's trying to make sure that they become better people as they grow up. He's definitely an influence in my life, and I know he's an influence in so many other people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you.
Will Artis. I live at 5083 Mill Creek Road. And I've lived here for about three years now. And when we moved here, we were looking for the best schools, which is why we chose York County and where we're living. The same thing is outside of school, we're also looking for programs for our children, because that's who I value the most right now, my family and my children. And I've had my kids in multiple programs around here that we've had to pull them out of because of what was happening. And I just wanna share with you, Team 24, the, the family, and the, what's being taught there, the values that are being, that my kids are, are being taught and what they're learning is, it's irreplaceable. So there's a reason why you see that growth right there. Because it's important to me and my values and what I want my, my children to learn. It's also important to a lot of others. That growth is because everyone wants to be there. If you play baseball in York County, Sheldon doesn't turn you down. He is there to teach you, he is there to help the youth. So it is extremely important to, to York County to have this zoned as commercial. So I, I am going to ask you to please work out something, figure something out to where it is commercial, whatever you need to do, just please keep it open. Okay, thank you.
My name is Chuck Atkins. I reside at 3825 Overlook Road in Rock Hill. Lifelong, my whole life in York County. I'm lucky to call Sheldon a family. He's real close to my brother and he's close to me. Six years ago, my daughter started playing softball at a late age. I had to find a place for her to play. I went to Sheldon and I said, Sheldon, what about softball at T24? He says, have it. So I run softball at T24. Mr. Les Meister talked earlier about these girls and this organization. And being in York County, it's not just York County. We have kids from Chester, Lancaster, Gastonia, Lincolnon, Columbia. We have kids who actually travel to York County, spend their money in York County to eat dinner before they go home. AC spoke to you earlier. She came to me at nine years old. She left for a little while, she came back. And the first thing she said when she came back to play for me is, I'm home. This is a home to these boys and girls. This is a place where they can thrive. Mr. Brown, like I said, he's there. They said, I'm there every day. He's there twice as much as I am, three times. No, he don't sleep. It's baseball and softball all the time. It's what he lives for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, distinguished and honorary members of council. Appreciate what you do. I have actually sat in your seat. I know this is not just a simple rezoning request. Understand, but I want you to understand what it is. Met Sheldon Brown when he first moved into our, our community out there. I'm sorry, I'm Perry Johnston. I live at 5001 Lake Miss Drive in Northeast Bethel. And again, known Sheldon since he moved out there. He's a man of extreme integrity and character. He believes in keeping children occupied and happy, building character in them. He has his own 501(c)(3) where he raises money, a lot of money, for underprivileged children. He's not a guy that's just out here for himself. He's out here for everybody. Sheldon built this facility basically to store his, started building this facility basically to store his boats and motorhomes and things like that. His children came up and they needed a place to practice, so he would move them out and practice. And when they got older, he needed more space. People talk about this as a baseball facility. It's a baseball, it's softball, it's basketball, it's a gymnastics facility. It just needed to get bigger and then more people realized that we don't have any place out there for training. Now, when I sat in your own seats many years ago, my big thrust was to get ballparks in the Lake Wiley area. And we finally did. Beautiful parks. We don't have the training facility. Sheldon has supported us since day one on those park, on the park. He rents fields from us. He doesn't have room where he is, so he rents fields from us at Field Day Park, which is yet another income. The Highway 274 Carter is, is gonna be more and more business-related as it grows. It's gonna, there's gonna be more and more rezoning requests for the 274 Carter as time goes on. There are businesses in the general area now. We should give due consideration. I'm not gonna go on and on about this. You've already heard from the people that really counted when those children came up. Please give due consideration on this rezoning request. We need to build character in kids, so we don't have to increase the size of our jails. Thank you for your time, thank you for what you do.
My name is Sheldon Brown, 2702 Windswept Cove, York, South Carolina. First, I'd like to apologize to T24 and to the council for having you here today for what we're dealing with. Everyone keeps talking about facility, facility, facility. In 2009, it was literally a shop. It was a shop. I built that shop because I was still playing professional sport and I would get, fly out and have to leave. I wanted a place to be able to store my toys, so when I left, that it wouldn't be vandalized. So it happened to be on the corner of Highway 274. When I come home, my children, my daughter Simone, she's a gymnast. So in that shop, there's gymnastics equipment. My son, he plays three sports. He plays baseball, basketball, football. So their basketball goes in there and their back cages in there. Well, the original 2009 building that was built, they were little kids, they were small kids. And we had enough space where I could take his rec teams in there, we would have a place to play. We would have a place to, to practice, because obviously the place was growing and we didn't have a lot of facilities to go to. Well, when they got older and they became teenagers, that little first area, we had, had outgrown it. So I went to the county and I asked to build another building, a bigger sized building. And people saw the growth of the success the kids were having. And it's just become, I understand what it's becoming, what it looks like, right? I get it. I, I'm not sitting here denying this, saying that it's not a facility. What I am gonna ask if you don't approve the zoning process, and I, I texted Ms. Love earlier, that you please think about working with me to make it right. Meaning, let's just don't kick the kids out, help me make it right. I'll move to a commercial piece of property if we can't do it, and I'll do whatever it takes to work with whoever I need to work to, to put up a facility that's in your standings or what it needs to be. I'm not here today to argue for us saying we're right, we're people that's voting against it. That's not what I'm here about. I understand you have a job to do, I appreciate your work, I thank you for listening to. Everyone, kids, I love you, right? You keep me young, right? A lot of people out there, they finish playing professional sport, they go crazy, right? Because it's, you know, so I just want you to consider it and just think about the kids. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. One last time, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Now would be your time. And, and I'm gonna do this just, just because I know there's a lot of folks who feel passionately about this, but a lot of folks are saying similar things. Please don't take this as me discouraging you. You wanna speak, you are certainly welcome to speak. But if you'll just raise your hand if, if you support it, that way, you know, the council can get that perspective if you don't want to, to get up and speak. And then that may save some others. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, sir.
I'm Brett Price, Lab 860, Smith Ford Road, Hickory Grove, South Carolina. This is the first season that my son, my son's seven years old. I wanted to bring him out there last year, but he wasn't, he wasn't ready. So they had done tryouts, and so I called Sheldon and asked him did he have any more spots. And he, he said, bring him on out there. So I brought him out there. And the minute my son walked in there, it was just like, it was just like a glow. And from that day on, I mean, it's like, you know, the good Lord touching you with something. I mean, you go in his place, I mean, it's like he just wraps. He's just got 10-foot-long arms and wraps his arms around every little kid. And I just, I just wish and hope that, you know, it stays where it's at. This, it's in their heart and it's special thanks to that man right there. Thank you.
My name is Harold Glass. I live at 249 Squirrel Lane in Lake Wiley, South Carolina. So I know you've heard from everybody, all the people here today, so I'm gonna say something slightly different because I agree with everything that everybody said. Just to give you a little bit of story about me, I moved here five years ago from Nashville, Tennessee. I've been here, I've been, I coached two baseball teams for Coach Brown. I have a 12U team, I have a 10U team. Both my boys play and they've been, my boys have been there for three and a half years. So out of the five years, we've been part of this organization for the majority of that time. And this is like a, a family to them. My boys are homeschooled, so I'll take any blessing and prayers that you want to give me right now because we homeschool. But we're there, I mean, we go there at noon, Coach Brown is there. We go there at 11 o'clock to give him a break from homeschooling, Coach Brown is there. I'm there with my boys. He's giving them lessons while we're there in the middle of the day, right? So this is truly inspiring to see what he does for the kids. But the, the different approach I'm gonna take here is this. I'm assuming, I can't ask you questions, I heard you say that to Brad back there, but I'm assuming that most of you are parents and I'm assuming that most of you are exceptional parents. I'm gonna make that assumption. But what I will say is one thing that we teach our kids is before you make a decision, understand the decision that you're making. Understand what the impact is. It's easy to say yes, it's easy to say no, but when you make that decision and you don't understand the impact and the ramifications of that decision and the four or 500 kids that are participating in this program, the kids that are going through difficult times and the baseball facility is their one positive hope, you take that away, right? So I'm gonna challenge you, right? Maybe there's one person up there right now that will say, you don't have to say who it is, but I want to check out this facility. Come in there one day, just one of you, and see what happens. Just be a fly on the wall. Watch our Coach Brown talk to the kids. Go in there and look on the wall and see all of the kids that were eight-years-old when they started there and now they're committed to college. It's not just about baseball, it's about hard work. When kids have bad grades, you know what Coach Brown does? The whole team has to pay for that, right? If he hears that a kid acted up in class and got in trouble, the whole team has to pay the consequence for that one kid not doing what they need to do in school. So this is more than just baseball, right? This is literally life and death for some kids. This is literally, are they gonna be able to be a successful citizen when they get older or is something gonna happen to, I think one gentleman said, are they gonna go to jail, right? That's the impact that this facility has. So please consider that and I really do challenge you, one person up there right here, just say, I'm gonna go in there for 30 minutes and let me see what this thing is all about. And then make your decision on yes or no. Thank you.
Anyone else in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Please come forward to state your name.
My name is Margaret Blackwell. I live at, I live at 5430 Baker Lane, Lake Wiley. I have watched this development from the beginning. I remember when it started out small and it's grown to cover most of the property. I've been amazed at how much has been packed into that residential neighborhood on that lot and have wondered how this was allowed. I don't question Mr. Brown's dedication to the youth of this county. I don't question the good things he's done for the youth of the county, but I do question the manner in which it's occurred. It's obvious that from the beginning, county rules and regulations have been ignored. Mr. Brown obviously knew permits were required because some buildings have permits, but even some of those, such as a carport, were built and not, and modified so that it's not a carport, they were used for other things. Some buildings have been built without permits. Buildings are very close to the property line, as you can see on the picture. Parking is a problem. People have to park across the street on West Liberty Hill. Mud's a problem there when it's been raining. Neighbor's views have been blocked. I think this is a case of knowing what you were doing did not meet county regulations and now after ignoring rules, asking for changes that will allow what I have done in the past to be made whole. Mr. Brown, I appreciate the remarks that you made to the council earlier, the, admitting that you did do this, and I just can't help but believe that a man as intelligent as you knew that he was not following the codes of the county. The Planning Commission voted eight to one against this rezoning and I hope, council, that you will support your commissioner's decisions on this.
I own the property right next door, 5013 West Liberty Hill Road. And the zoning thing in my land, which I own, I moved in there in 89. And in the paperwork, it says, no buildings in front of the mobile home. Well, I laid a brick underneath the mobile home, so I know where it's at. And all those buildings is in front of it. And after the, after the second one started on, I went down to the county and asked the man if he got a permit. And he said, yes. And I said, how do you get a permit for something that's not supposed to be there? How do you get power hooked up with something without a permit? That's what I want to know. And there's floodlights out there in that front yard, shining completely through my bedroom. We had to go get real dark blinds put up because you couldn't sleep, it's too light. York Electric come out there and put them lights up for him. And I asked them and they said, they, you know, they got a permit for it. I said, I don't understand all this. How do you get a permit for something that wasn't permitted? How do you get electric hooked up to a building that big without a building permit? Because I built one out back and they made me build it out back, 30 by 50. And I had to show York Electric the building permit number before I could get the power hooked up to it. And, and the parking is unreal. I've had to call the sheriff out there to get them moved so I could get down my driveway. They parked in front of the mailbox. I've had to call and get them moved out because the mailman couldn't get to the mailbox. And it's just, it's a total mess and the mud is unreal. I left there a while ago and it's all the way down 274. And the section they come out there and state come out there and put grass on, it was fine as long as the stakes was up. Once them stakes come out of the ground, they put yellow tape around it. Grass come up good. Now it ain't nothing but a mud hole because soon as they, the stakes got disappeared, they started parking in there. So all the mud from that area goes right on out the road, you know? And you can go out there and look at it. I got pictures. I can prove it to you. And you got people parking in that area that the state owns, that they come out there and put, put grass on. And it's just been a problem. I had called the law last night. I had called York County Sheriff last night because of the noise. I'm trying to sit there, watch TV and this boom starts then, then it goes boom again, boom again. This went on for like 15 minutes. Finally, I got my book out and called the sheriff department and they come out. And actually, before the sheriff got out there, you know that noise quit? That's amazing, ain't it? Makes you wonder. Because there is some kids that come over there, their parents drive them over there and they have sheriff cars. So, you know, I'm 66-years-old and my wife is sick and I'm not doing good and this is constant noise all the time, in and out, in and out. Corridors slamming, you know, people hollering. And every time you cut grass, you gotta pick up balls. I got pictures of balls right here. And they got the team name on them, Team 1024. That's just a portion of them. And I hit one with my mower and it cost me almost $400 to get it fixed. It done stuck down in the grass. It broke the blade, broke the mount. The blade goes on and broke the belt on a 54-inch riding Husker mower. You know, this is a residential area and it's what it's zoned for and that's what it was when I moved in there. Matter of fact, Leo Motley, the man owned the place, when I moved in, he went down there to get a building permit. He was wanting to put a building out front, a mobile home. And he wanted to put part of it a horse stable and part of it a workshop. And they wouldn't give him a building permit because it was in front of the mobile home. Since then, there's been two great big buildings built in front of the mobile home. And you can pull the information up on the land and see, it's right there in writing. There's no, I got mine at home because my place is paid for and I got the paperwork and, and you can pull it up yourself. I mean, it's right there in plain writing. It's not supposed to be there. And honestly, I think it needs to come down. They went up illegally, they should come down legal. Just metal screwed together. It's not a big deal. They can come down just as quick as they went up, get the right people out there. How to get, how to get power in the buildings? It don't make no sense. The whole thing don't make no sense. Just a thought. Makes you think, don't it? I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wishes to speak against this rezoning? Is the gallery? No others? Do we have a motion to close public hearing? Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a new motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to approve for discussion.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Love?
So I'm the councilperson for, for this area. For those of you who don't know, I'm District 2. And when I ran for office, it wasn't for the position, it was for the job. And there are things like this that make my job very difficult because what's important to me is what's important to you. But the problem is that what's important to you tonight is different than what might be important to you in a year or two when Sheldon Brown decides that this property is too small and it can become something else that you might not want. And then that would become important to you. This room has been filled to this capacity and the overflow rooms on the nights when things have come to, to, to be proposed for the Lake Wiley area that people did not want. Things like a car wash, a fast food restaurant, a convenience store. So the example, and I think I know what the Boy Scouts gonna be talking to me about tomorrow night now, so, but, but here's the problem. You've got something that you love there now and it's, it's just, it's evolved and you love it and your kids love it. I represent 41,000 people in, in District 2. And so the people here tonight love it, but there are other people in the district who are expecting me to do the right thing. And Sheldon Brown, let me tell you that this puts me in a very bad position because I want to do what's right for the kids, I want to do what's right for the people, but I also want the people to do what's right for the county and for their neighbors. There's another, there's another case that's gonna be coming before council and it's similar to this. It's, it's kind of a business, it's, it's a residence that has evolved into a major business. So how many of these are gonna come before us where we say, hey, you know what? We're gonna, we're gonna forgive you because we understand what you're doing. And you might be doing a good thing, but, so we're, we're gonna let you, we're gonna give you a, we're gonna give you a pass. But what happens when the neighbor on the block across the street from you wants to put a convenience store there? And they just start building and putting it there? And they tell us it's gonna be one thing, but in the end, it, it becomes a convenience store. You're gonna show up back down here and you're gonna be upset because you've gotten something else that Lake Wiley doesn't want. Sheldon, will you just come up to this corner right here because I want to have a conversation with you? I just want to say this and I want to talk to you like I'm sitting across the table from you and we are having an individual conversation, but it's a whole lot more of you than just, than just one. And that is this, I want to do the right thing and I'm willing to work with you to, to make the right thing happen. And I don't know, the other gentleman that spoke earlier on mentioned that this might not be the ultimate place. It might be too small. We need to have that conversation and we need to determine if that's the case because my fear is that this is gonna become something and we're gonna have this many people here at a future meeting saying, we're not happy about this coming here and you've moved on and have a bigger facility and a bigger place and because it sounds like you, you're about to outgrow where you are. Art-wise, space-wise, community-wise and everything. So, so I'm willing to work with you, talk to you. I'm the person that's gonna go and visit and spend 30 minutes there. That's my job, right? So I'm the person that's gonna come out there, I'm gonna spend some time with you and I'm gonna help you figure out what we need to do between now and the second reading on this. And I just want the people, excuse me, in this room to realize that tonight you're in favor of something that you want me to, to allow. The next time, you might not be in favor of something. And this is a very difficult job and I'm gonna do the right thing. I might not always be your favorite person, but I'm gonna do the right thing for District 2 as a whole in every case. So I think what is fair tonight is to say that, you know what? I've heard from you and I know that you love what he's doing and, you know, we're gonna get together and we're gonna talk about it and we're gonna figure out what the long-term goal and use for this property needs to be. So we're gonna pass it tonight and then we'll get together between second reading and now and we'll, we'll figure this out. Is that there? Okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Roddy?
Yes, I, I'll say, if Allison's taking a trip, she usually invites me over to the great land of Clover and, and says, hey, this is what we got going on. So I'm sure I'll be taking that 30-minute visit also. I want, I want to start out by saying, I'm from Rock Hill and I know Sheldon played football. Had no idea his love and passion for, for baseball and other sports until obviously he retired from the NFL. We have about 20 NFL players that's come out of Rock Hill, 20. I'm just estimating if you put the combined salaries from those 20 players, I'm sure we hitting a half a billion dollars. I'll go on record to say, not one of them has made the commitment back into the Rock Hill community that Sheldon has made in the York slash Clover area. And the funny part about it is, he's from Louisville. He's from Louisville. You know, he could have put this facility, took his heart, his passion back to Louisville and that community will be having this situation or this issue or this good problem. Because I think it's a good problem when you start out something small and it grows in something that you probably never even imagined it would grow to. So I'm, I'm gonna take that visit and even though the planning commission said one thing, we've seen instances or we've had agenda items where the planning commission said no, we've said yes. We've had situations where the planning commission has said yes, we've said no. So it's not a slam dunk if the planning commission says no and it's not a slam dunk if the planning commission says yes. We do try to take into account the effects. Someone mentioned the effects of our decisions, what, what it will have. It's easy to sit and say yes to something or say no and just sit back and take the planning commission's recommendation or the staff's recommendation. Sometimes it takes a little, little more, a little in-depth digging into to say, hey, what do we have here? Because what's been brought to us, and usually we see a packed room and my colleagues know this for, for certain. Usually we see a packed room when people are in opposition. Very rare do we see a packed room when people are for something. Because the people that's typically for something, they'll stay at home and it takes a lot. Doesn't take much for somebody to be against it to show up here and say, I don't want it. But it takes a lot for someone to be passionate enough and have that desire and their hearts in it to show up and say, hey, I'm for it. in it to show up and say, hey, I'm for it. I'm blown away by the support. Even the kids who got up and spoke were elegant in their speeches. And I'm sure the parents didn't have to say, come on, you going to speak? I'm sure these kids wanted to come speak. I wish this facility was in Rock Hill and we had this issue in Rock Hill. I know some kids out of Rock Hill that play on T20, Team 24. So, I think it's a good thing, like Allison said, we need to have the conversation, is this the right location? Let's look to see the next four, five, 10 years, will this location fit? We, we've approved and made exceptions. And I know in the proposed zoning that's being requested, there are probably some things that five years down the road, six years down the road, if Sheldon decides to move on, we wouldn't probably want to see certain things come to that property that would be allowed under that zoning. But we, we have a mechanism that we can put conditions. We can strike certain future uses of the property. But I think the bigger conversation is, this thing has grown, it's evolving, and it's only going to get bigger, it's only going to get better. If this is going to be the right location, how do we make it work? If this is something that maybe you can outgrow in the next couple of years, how do we accommodate that until that next site is proposed? But I applaud you for choosing that area to put your program. Now, I wish more people who had the resources, the know-how, the knowledge, would make those kind of investments back in the community. So, I'll be supporting it tonight and hopefully, we can find a good solution to this location if this is the right location. And if not, we can help find the right location to continue to do what you're doing.
Yeah, I'd like to, first of all, I've spent a lot of time on this today. I've received a lot of phone calls, a lot of parents of the kids that you coach and speaking about what an impact that you've made on their life. I myself volunteered coaching for many years. One of the men who had a great impact in my life was Councilman Bob Roddy whenever he was one of my coaches. I know what coaching can really do as far as keeping you out of trouble. Also, as a business owner, I use this as an example many times. I could completely see it, someone starting their business in their home and it's something very small, and as you start to grow, you make a little bit more room, you make a little bit more room. But there comes a point that you can't just operate it as a business if it's in residential. I'm glad to hear, you know, Councilman Love is exactly right in what she's saying, that it's something that we've got to find a middle ground for. I think that was the smartest thing said and it was said by a 14-year-old girl today. And that was, is there not somewhere where we can meet in the middle whenever we have a problem? And I think that's the way that we move forward. Sometimes, it's not about the way it's written, it's about what's doing right for the community. And we are here to represent all of the people within the community. So, thank you for what you do.
Sheldon, first of all, I want to thank you. Sense of community, sense of well-being, knowing that what you're offering in our community is something that we need in all of our communities. The fact that we've got students here that are involved in being outside, being active, and not sitting looking at their phone, and they're involved in real life, there's a lot of lessons learned in sports. And I think that what you're doing here is phenomenal with the students, so I applaud you on that. As far as Allison was stating, I think that, you know, as, as, as York County, as we look at these different things, you know, there's many variables involved in this stuff. And having these open-ended discussions is critical. Because it's all about understanding, hearing, and having communication. I think tonight, this has been a great discussion across the board. And I look forward to, you know, working with Allison and across the board. And I look forward to taking that trip out there. Taking, yeah, I'm jumping on board. So, I love to see it. Thank you, what you're doing. Appreciate it.
Ms. Winkler?
I'll just say, Mr. Brown, thank you for what you do. It's, it's refreshing to hear a professional athlete that's giving back to the community and making headlines for good reasons instead of the reasons a lot of professional athletes do. And, you know, the impact you've had in this community is obvious. I really came into tonight wanting to vote for this with some concerns, so I'm glad to hear that Councilmember Love wants to do that. My concerns are exactly what she said. Biggest concern is changing this to a BD-1 in the future. And someday in the future, when you're no longer able to fit into the property or you decide to sell and move on or whatever happens, the things that can come in behind you are things that will not give to the community like you have. You know, with BD-1 zoning, there's a lot of things that could come in there that could be a detriment to this residential community where you're not. And that concerns me. It concerns me that if we approve it, you're still going to need variances from the Board of Zoning Appeals for setbacks and for other things that may or may not go through. And so, I'm glad to hear that Councilmember Love is willing to work with you and that you're willing to work on that thing. You know, I, I support that 100%. I may not be part of the caravan coming, but I will come to see you. I'm not sure if I'll be able to join in with them on that one, depending on what it is, I'll be there. But I will be to see you up there to see you before the next reading on this because it is something we need in our communities, is to develop these young people. Talking about headlines, there are so many headlines about young people getting into trouble because they don't have somewhere to go and don't have something to do. And I'm going to be, you know, talking to everybody I can in Council District Three to see if we can find somewhere for you to move on over here if you'd like that fits in with it and see what we can do over here. But I'll be supporting this tonight, so.
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. It's been a long night and I'm grateful for everyone else to come out tonight and spend the time with us and participate in this process. Sheldon, I'll just tell you, I mean, you've got a special mission, man. I mean, you're doing more, more good than, than harm, that's for sure. There's a ton of people here that are, are just receiving a lot more value even just beyond the athletics. And, you know, that's, that's special to see. It would definitely, well, one thing that we try to do in looking at these, and I can tell you, when this first came across the agenda, I was like, well, staff says deny it, you know, planning commission says deny it, like, nine times out of 10, that turns into a no-brainer, man. Like, well, we should probably just deny this. But seeing the support and actually hearing the story certainly changes things a little bit. So, you know, when, when a doctor is confronted with a problem, they say, we should try to do no harm, right? And, you know, one thing that we try to do is, is the same thing. I mean, we don't take the oath not to, but we try not to do any harm. And it's clear, you know, if we just said, you know, we're going to deny this tonight and kill it, that would be, we'd be violating that oath. We'd be doing a lot of harm. And that's certainly not anything anyone up here wants to do. You know, I, I'm just going to echo what everyone else said. I want to, you know, see, you know, what comes of this and hopefully work towards a solution that actually works. And, you know, the sheer number of people here certainly indicates that the demand for, for you and your, and your facility is starting to exceed the supply. And if it didn't before, after tonight, we all know it's going to. I mean, because a lot more people, because of this, one outcome of this process is that more people are exposed to who Sheldon Brown is and what you're doing. So, clearly, you know, there's going to be a need for, you know, an expansion of some kind. It certainly wouldn't do anyone any good to, to kill this tonight and not give everyone here the opportunity. I was once a, you know, a kid whose passion for baseball far exceeded my talent and I would have killed to have access to a facility like this. So, thank you.
Sheldon, well, clearly, you have a community that supports you and has rallied behind you. The most impressive thing that you did for me was when you got up here and you owned the fact that what you did was wrong. And instead of putting yourself first or pushing for your rezoning, you put the kids first by saying, give us some time. Because there, this is an issue that I think folks need to realize, the two folks that got up against, that was brave. And I think that we need to be respectful and we need to make sure that, that we address those concerns, definitely. But I do think that the testimony that you provided to the kids that you serve is to get up and to own it and to move on and to find a solution that works for the community. That speaks volumes and I know that this council is apparently going to vote unanimously to help you get towards that. All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And what I'm going to do now is I'm going to give some folks an opportunity to leave since we have a big packed house that was here for just that issue, and we'll take a minute to stretch our legs. If we could all calm down? Thank you. We still have five more public hearings, so we need to move forward. Res zoning action, hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 21-24, tax map number 33900010, to rezone from AGC to RUD, 9.639 acres in District Three.
Good evening. So, this is a rezoning case 2124, AGC to RUD, 2321 Chester Highway. This is 9.64 acres. See the arrow here? So, the request is to subdivide into three parcels, each with about three acres apiece. It's a residential area, so it's, it's compatible with the area. The staff recommended approval and by eight to zero vote, the planning commission also recommended approval. Zoning is AGC right now, want to rezone to RUD. And it's agricultural future land use, but it's not any kind of a farm use, so we support it going to a large lot, single-family residential use.
Any questions of staff?
Quick question on this, what is the? Oops, thank you. What is the, what would be the end goal of this facility, but what is the use for at this point? I'm not sure.
Showing this proposed site plan here, it's going to be three single-family homes. Each home would have a little over three acres.
Each home have over three acres, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions of staff before we move to public hearing? Thank you, Brian. At this time, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this rezoning? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this rezoning?
Move close.
Motion and a second to close. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve first reading.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second for first reading. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to rezoning number three. Rezoning to hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 21-25, tax map number 43400019, to rezone from AGC to RUD, one acre in District Five.
Okay. So, rezoning case 2125, AGC to RUD. The property address, it's 1555 Ferris Road, and it's a one-acre subdivision. You can kind of see from the arrow here, there are two single-family homes on this parcel which AGC allows. And they're trying to carve a one-acre parcel around the existing home. So, no, no home is to be built. The property's going to look exactly the same except for this subdivision here. So, staff recommended approval, subject to the condition that the subdivision occur because we don't want split zoning on that parcel. The planning commission voted nine-zero to recommend approval, subject to that condition. This is agricultural future land use, so once again, this is not a farm, it's just a couple of houses, so we would support a rezoning to RUD for this portion of the property. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Brian. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Madam Chairman, members of the council, my name is Sprat White. My wife Sandra is here with me tonight. We live at, on Fairway Drive in Fort Mill. We are two very lucky people. In 1989, we inherited a 50-acre farm on Mockingbird Road, Mockingbird Lane, in the Bethesda For 25 years after that, we enjoyed that property, farmed it, and we added to it when we had the opportunity. Until a few years ago, we got it up to 167 acres in total. Two ponds, a cabin, a horse barn, and not a single right-of-way across it for electricity, gas, or any of that sort of thing. We are very lucky. So lucky that we wanted to make sure that this property would be available to be enjoyed by future generations in York County. And so, we put a conservation easement on it by way of the Nation Ford Land Trust. That was in 2017. Thus, this property will never be developed. Then we decided, we're getting on in years, somebody's going to have to take care of it. And so, we donated the property. We donated the property to the Ann Springs Close Greenway. So, in the very near future, we did reserve a life estate. In the very near future, this property will be available to the membership at the Greenway and to the public. Most of us know how the Greenway operates. Right now, it will be used for programs that the Greenway and we work out together. Our problem is, this proposal for the subdividing of this property, which is currently zoned agricultural, may be the camel's nose under the tent for some bad things to happen in this area. We developed this, we set aside the property, we donated it in the faith that the zoning that protects this area and protects this property would remain the same. And if the petitioner in this case is able to carve out a one-acre piece and have it rezoned RUD, there's nothing in the world to stop everybody else with agricultural minimum five-acre parcels from doing the same thing. Now, the, is this what I can use? I apologize for having to be OJT here. I'm not even sure how this thing works. There it is. There are some RUD-zoned properties in the area. I think most of them are here. And I suspect most of them were already in place before the zoning ordinances went in a number of years ago. These are probably grandfathered properties. Virtually everything else you see here, all around here, is at least five acres for any residents. And if you look at the area and pull back to where you can see not only Mockingbird Lane, but you could see Williamson Road, Oak Park, Bridgewater Road, State Road 324, Ferris Road, and Falls Road, and a number of others, you would see that this area is developing in a manner that preserves the agricultural character. in a manner that preserves the agricultural character of it and the natural beauty of it. So our concern is not necessarily just this proposal, but what it represents. And I've recognized that the petitioner has a problem with two houses, but I believe the record will show, and your exhibit E on your packet will show, that when this property was purchased by the petitioner, that there was only one residence. And I assume that he was aware of what the zoning ordinance is required when he built the second place. So our request of you is to deny this request, this proposed rezoning, because I think it represents a danger to what we are really trying to preserve. I'll be glad to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. White. We typically don't ask questions. We take comments, but I do appreciate your comments here, and I appreciate your donation to the citizens of the community and your generosity with the property.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Second for discussion.
This is my district. This is the first that I've heard of there being a concern with the property and the development. One of the things that's an issue is that we have the planning commission and staff that are approving this moving forward. It sounds like there are already two structures that exist on the property. I would like to have... I do not believe that this is something that we will ultimately approve at second or third reading, given the information that we've learned, but I'd like to, as the representative for this district, have a little bit of time to circle back with Jonathan Buono, who's not able to be here tonight, to give us some feedback on that. Any other discussion? Any other comments?
So, on the Nation Ford Land Trust Board, and I'm sensitive to things like this. Unfortunately, when you have a conservation easement, the only thing that you can really control is what's within that line. And I'm a big advocate for conservation easements and green space and all of that good stuff. And I'm not a proponent of things that might crop up around those conservation easements that, you know, where people have, in good faith, put things in an easement for perpetuity. And so these things are very important to me. In this case, I do not think that this rezoning is a liability to the conservation easement, because there are already two homes there, and when you look at the rest of these, you'll see that the little red teepees are actually little homes. And so, and I just, you know, I understand the need to look further into it and to hear more about it, but it's not of a major concern to me at this point to subdivide that one that already has a second residence on there. And, you know, not everybody wants to live on the same acreage. Sometimes there's a need to carve out. It's not going to change the 167 acres, and which we do appreciate that donation, because that's a lot of land and a lot of effort that went into that. But sometimes there's a need around and around the outside of those areas for a rezoning or something to this request.
Any other discussion? Mr. Winkler?
I'm glad to hear that we're going to let it go through on the first reading for a little more discussion. My original thought when I saw this was, again, all the ones down on the corner of Williamson and Mockingbird Lane that are an acre or less, and I was kind of wondering about that, but I'm glad to hear that Chairwoman Cox is going to meet and give them more information, because I'd like to know more about it before we go forward. I personally didn't have any concern of subdividing even along property that's been put in a conservation easement with that little bit, but this is Chairwoman Cox's area, and so I defer to her at this point to find out more information, of course.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. We've approved first reading. Counsel to hold a public hearing of an ordinance to repeal and replace Chapters 154 subdivision code and 155 zoning code to adopt a revised zoning map, which renames certain zoning districts and provides for new zoning districts, to relocate Section 154.038 Development Agreements to Chapter 153 Planning and Development, to relocate certain code sections pertaining to tax districts from the zoning code to Chapters 35 Taxation and Finance, to approve the York County Land Development Manual related to the implementation of the requirements of Chapter 154, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Laddie Parrish. I live at 3116...
Laddie, can you pull up...
Okay. 3116 McFarland Road. I am here to address being in favor of a small portion of the rezoning. I haven't read the whole thing and haven't studied it, but the one we're in favor of, and I'm representing Protect Fish and Creek Group, and the one we are in favor of is the changing the agricultural to not allow a quarry, to require it to move to a R1 zoning. So we're thankful for that, and we would like to see that move forward, and I'm not going to take up any more of your time, because y'all got a lot going on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Any opposed?
And y'all know I'm not up here to be opposed to this ordinance, but it's kind of weird that either for or against it, because it's kind of both ways. So, talked to y'all last time, a couple meetings ago, and I just want to reiterate a few things. Some things have been stated, I think I said, that I don't want anybody putting words in my mouth, first of all. The whole slope thing, where we talked about walkability, not sure how it got out there, certain things I said, because I think some of them might have been distorted a little bit. I think one of the things with the walkability and 10% open space I wanted to get across is, I think we were talking about 10% slopes and open space, and I know y'all went to 15 discussion, but we're talking about active open space versus open space. Those are two totally different things. If you have an active open space and someone comes in, they're going to clear a lot, they're going to clear land, they want to get it flat, to throw the frisbee, as some of you said, to play football, whatever, 10%, whatever those slopes are, it's understood. I definitely understand those. When you get to a point of 15% and not go into the 25% slopes and open space in what I call tree areas, it's kind of hard to go in and grade those areas when you can use those areas for walkability, for trails, or whatever it might be, anyway. So I think we're talking about two different things there, and I think we need to address that. One of the things I want to talk about with the ordinance is, as far as, you know, there's been three ordinances really in the last 13 to 14 months. So I know you keep saying, well, we'll go next time, and then we'll figure it out later, and then we'll figure it out later. I feel like we're in this total, I don't know, feels like Groundhog Day. I wish it was Groundhog Day, so you could use that as a joke, but it's just over and over we keep saying we're going to fix it later. I'm ready to fix it now. I have read this entire ordinance, as I'm sure most of you know, and there's just things we need to try to fix. The RUD, that district says, "This district should be utilized wherever development pressure is increasing, but public water and sewer are not readily available." I'm adamant on not tying this to the USB in RUD 1. The ordinance states that it's for areas without public water and sewer. That's what the ordinance states. So we're saying you don't have water and sewer, but we're going to tie it to the USB. It just doesn't make logical sense to me. And others I've spoken to, it's the same way. What logical sense does it make to tie something to the USB when it's saying that ordinance, for that zoning, doesn't have water and sewer? Open space in general, I know we talked about 40% of the 20% open space, what you can count how, what you can count with the slopes. You know, we're talking about most of these areas that have septic. For these type situations that have septic, everywhere that has the flat areas you need for septic. There's other areas that don't have flat areas, and those folks aren't going to just go through and demolish the land and clearcut it. They're not going to do that. That's the type of development we're talking about. Last council meeting, I can't remember who said it, it was talked about low-impact development. Huntersville was one of the starting points for low-impact development. When you look at the RUD and RUD 1 districts, those are low-impact developments already. So we're trying to talk about a low-impact development policy, or regulation, or ordinance, where it already has that. You have ditch streets. You don't have sidewalks. You don't have curb and gutter. That's part of what low-impact development is. So I think that needs to be thought about before moving forward with another policy or another ordinance. As far as tree save, I've said this 100 times, but the four different areas tree saves, it doesn't make logical sense to me. You can have greater areas of tree save, in my opinion. You can have better usable areas of tree save if you don't have four different ones, because people are really just trying to pocket them in certain areas. I'm going to say it one more time, but RUD 1, "But public water and sewer are not readily available, and you're tying it to the USB," and I think that needs to be removed in the chart. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Childers. Anyone else who wishes to speak against?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of council, Jonathan Yates, 105 Broad Street, Charleston, South Carolina. I'm so glad to be before you tonight. Some of you, Councilmember Love has seen me before, before the Board of Zoning Appeals. Since the late 1990s, I've been working on cellular towers here in York County. It was interesting, when I started this work in the late 90s, towers were designed to provide coverage mainly to businesspeople, wealthy people, the people that could afford a cell phone. Today, I don't know if there are any residents of York County that do not have a cell phone. We particularly saw, in our industry, an incredible demand on networks over the past 24 months. A lot of folks were working remotely from home. A lot of folks were trying to educate their children from home. As I know, in parts of the county, that became an issue with the broadband initiative and the issues with that. We've become a way of life. You know, it hit me the other day. I left my house, and a block later, I realized I didn't have my cell phone. I raced back to my house, and old days, I would only then have if I left my wallet, and then only if I didn't think there were any policemen on the road. We've become essential. They call us the fourth futility. Also, I appreciate and understand, a recode is an incredible event. It takes a lot, a lot of work. And the last thing you want is some guy with a bad haircut to tell you that he has a problem with one of the sections. I'm obviously referring to Subpart 3.9 Communication Towers. I first got a glimpse of it last week, and then I got it, and I want to thank the county attorney, who was very gracious with his time with me. In general, Subpoint 3.9, it's a very good recodification of an ordinance that we've been working with for years, but there are two issues that I really think would hold up its passage. One is the setbacks, and they've changed over the past week. What is essential for us now, in this industry, where the networks are today in York County, we're now trying to fill in the pieces. Where there's more use in one area, we have to handle what we call capacity. We have to move in and get infrastructure to that area, and it becomes more tricky. After we do the basic coverage play, then we have to follow how you grow, and God knows, Charleston County always brags on their growth. Nobody's growing like York County, and y'all know it. I mean, it's phenomenal what has happened here. The old code for cell towers had a very good rule for setbacks. This code tried to incorporate it, but it sort of missed. And the biggest thing they missed on is, they went to a setback of 75% of height of tower from any lot line. That goes against what you see throughout most of the state of South Carolina, where we have what is called a certified fall zone. The purpose for that restriction, the intent is very good. If I build a tower on my property, I don't want it falling on my next-door neighbor, Councilmember Love's property. So what a lot of ordinances in the state do, instead of just having an arbitrary half-height, third-height, whatever, they just say certified fall zone. And what that means is a South Carolina professional engineer will have to under-seal certify what would happen in the 500-year catastrophic event. Because again, the intent of this is to protect your neighbor in case of a catastrophic event that would take the tower down. What I can tell you is, the way these towers are designed, if a catastrophic event took it down, they wouldn't be a neighbor anyway, because his house would have long gone. We have to build to what is called the NCTIA 222H standard. We had our first big test since I've been in the industry, when Hurricane Katrina rolled through Louisiana, Mississippi. And the interesting thing we found there, the towers held up unless they were hit by a missile, like a section of a bridge airborne, or a boat airborne. So we're over, overdesigned. My concern with this most recent change, which is changing the setback to three-quarters height, that's going to rule out what could be the perfect property, the property that has the best tree cover, exactly where the carriers need to be, but they can't meet that height. They can't meet that setback. What I would highly, highly recommend, and I know it's late in the game, and I apologize to one and all for coming late in the game, is if we could take a look at certified fall zones, reach out to your consultant, they can find them in ordinances throughout the state, throughout the country. And again, what that does, the purpose of that section is to make sure my tower doesn't harm someone else. You have a South Carolina professional engineer, he reviews it, he designs it, and he puts it under seal. Only another small thing, and I'll bring it up again with county attorney, one of the carryovers from the old ordinance was a requirement that we had to build the tower within 90 days of Board of Zoning Approval, Board of Zoning Appeals Approval, excuse me, it's getting late in the night. That was drafted in that ordinance prior to the state's vested rights statute, so I would ask them to revisit that. Otherwise, I applaud everyone who worked on this code. When looking for my cell tower section, I started reading some of the others. It shows you how I spend my idle time, but obviously, a lot of hard work's gone in, a lot of dagum good work, and with just two tweaks on our ordinance, we can continue to provide the coverage that the citizens of York County expect and deserve. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak against?
Madam Chair, council, my name is Keith Powell with Optima Towers, from Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, 886 Johnny Dots Boulevard. I've been working in York County for many years here, developing towers with myself, obviously other consultants, or excuse me, other companies, Comporium being one of them. We feel very much the same way that Mr. Yates does. Overall, the ordinance seems to be pretty good. There's a couple sticking points of the setback, as he had noted, obviously with the growth of York County and moving from mainly rural county to a very suburban county, and obviously a lot of people moving here. Uses of this area is very, very much required for cell phones. They need them everywhere, and we need to be able to adequately and efficiently be able to try to build sites to provide coverage for those areas. So I leave you at that, those two sections regarding vested rights and then the setbacks. If we could work something regarding those, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Quinn Smith, 6121 Charlotte Highway, York, South Carolina, 29745. Good evening. I come in front of council tonight to express my concerns about recent and future rule changes pertaining to developing property in York County. As a young developer who is committed to building low-impact developments in York County, all I've witnessed in recent years is the limiting and disincentivizing of low-impact developments. We pride ourselves on creating 1-2 acre lot subdivisions and have built over 25 in York County since 1988. What concerns me is the rules and regulations passed in recent years have directly affected larger lot developments in a negative way. The way we develop encourages larger wooded lots with natural green space. This is the way that we have developed for years before these rules were in place, and recent... recent code changes have tremendously hindered our development styles. Changes to AGC zoning and RUD requirements within the urban service boundary are two crucial changes that have limited our development style when it regards to low-impact developments. AGC zoning makes up almost fifty percent of the land in the county, RUD zoning makes up roughly twenty-five percent of the land in the county, and forty percent of all land is within that urban service boundary. Because of recent regulation changes, it is absolutely not feasible to create larger lot developments in AGC zoning anymore. So that has just eliminated half of the land in the county that is feasible for a low-impact development. Because of new rule changes regarding required open and green space corridors within the urban service boundary, it is extremely hard to make a development feasible within that boundary. All that leaves is the RUD property outside of the urban service boundary as a feasible property for local low-impact developers to look at. Just two years ago, seventy-five percent of the land in all of York County was feasible for a low-impact developer to look at. In just two years, that number has shrunk to approximately fifteen percent of the land in the county that we'll look at as a low-impact development, which is what the citizens of York County want in this county. That doesn't even take into consideration the viable land options when you look at the soils on that piece of property, because of well and septic, the topography, which has been amongst discussions, and the road frontage. From what I've seen in the last couple of years, I do not see a future for low-impact development in this county, which is a shame for someone who is invested and wants to stay in this county, grew up here, and wants to work here for thirty to forty years. This trickle-down does not just affect developers. We have multiple custom home builders here who have been here for two years just with us as developers to speak our piece. It devalues the landowners. So landowners that own AGC property, or property that's inside the urban service boundary, these regulations have directly devalued their property significantly, because there is no development possibilities now. So it's devaluing landowners, it's extremely hard for these custom builders to survive now. So your national builders are coming in, they're able to develop, and these local builders are desperately trying to find lots to build on, and it's just not happening. And on top of that, in this re-code, you're now limiting the road frontage splits. So what's happening now is because we can't develop on over sixty percent of the property we used to, builders are turning to road frontage, and that's being limited now. So, there's one common change, and one common issue in this code, and it's negatively affecting local businesses, local owners, landowners, and local families. And again, you know, we do, we appreciate all you guys do as a council in fighting for us. We appreciate your work with us on the impact fee. That was a huge thing for us, and you know, I can speak for everybody that's a builder or developer or grading contractor in this room, is they do appreciate your work. But all we ask is that you see it from our perspective, and the dimming light at the end of the tunnel. We're getting pushed out, and we will leave if it comes to that. But we, we build developments that people enjoy, and all we get is, is rules and regulations to disincentivize that. So, I appreciate all you guys do, appreciate all the time and effort that you guys go into listening to us, and just hope that you guys take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's John Harding, 5945 Old York Road. I'm here tonight to talk on two things, one as a builder, and another as a potential developer. I've been building here in York County for twenty years. Currently, there's nowhere to build. I have people calling me every day, I have realtors calling me every day, they're looking for houses to sell. They're not here. The turnover is not there anymore. There's nowhere to build. There's opportunities out here, but with the regulations that are currently established, and what we're looking at to change, it's not beneficial to the developers. So, you heard Quinn earlier, they're gonna leave. Now, name one developer development right now that's going on, other than Maygreen, for custom home builders in this county. There's not one. Just think about it. Nobody. So you all have families here, you have friends here, you have people that want to come to this county from other places, you have family members that leave here and want to come back, but there's no houses to be had. I've had three calls and texts tonight, since I've been sitting here listening to all the talks tonight from realtors. Do you have any houses? No, I don't, not right now. So, we need to consider that. There are several changes that we need to look at in this new development. One is the RUD tree save in open space areas. That needs to be twenty percent, period. Nothing else, no exceptions, except for maybe in the special overlay area, Lake Wally. Road frontage split should be based on road conditions. Currently, the South Carolina DOT has those rules established. York County can change that. I'm looking at a piece of property now, that South Carolina DOT says is good, York County staff says not good. That's a problem. We need to look at that. I look at South Carolina DOT as the expert. So, when you look at that and say, "Well, can we use this piece of property?", no, you can't, because they won't allow it. There's other things that, like where roads come in, the new ordinance, or what they're looking at for the new ordinance is inner road systems. And Mr. Winkler, I took him after our development to look at what we had. We have property there that would be very valuable to people to build new houses, but there's no way to put a road in there. So, that's a problem. I think we can look at that on an individual basis. Every road doesn't need to come from the interior. We can look at it, if the road's already established, why not use that road, especially if we can meet the codes of the South Carolina DOT. There's other things in that ordinance that don't make sense, like walking trails and amenities. You remember, Mr. Roddy, you said, in the workshop, you were talking about people and the end customer, and listening to the professionals, the developers, the builders. Who's gonna pay for that amenity at the end? The end user, right? Because I can assure you, at Maygreen, if they have to put an amenity in, that person's gonna have to pay for that. So, we need to look into that. And I'll also say, as was stated earlier by Mr. Childers, this ordinance has changed three times. Staff can't keep up with it, it moves too fast for them. I can tell you through my own experience, that things were submitted, reviews were made, things were missed. Now, I don't know if you know how much it costs to do a development, to get it off the ground and do the due diligence, but it's expensive, in the thousands of dollars. And if staff misses something, and then, oh wait, three, four months later, something pops up, that's a problem. So, that's money out of our pockets that we can't afford to do. You know, I hear a lot of stuff talking about schools and the effect that the new buildings would have, new houses would have on schools. Well, I just purchased two new trucks for my company, I just paid two thousand and eighty-six dollars in taxes yesterday. One thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-one cents of that two thousand and eighty-six dollars went to schools. All right? So the developments that we're talking about, half-million-dollar houses and up, those are gonna be professionals moving into the area, there's gonna own companies of their own, they're gonna be high-tax bracket personnel, they're gonna be paying their taxes, they're not gonna be a burden on the county. I think I was told it was about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or less is a burden to the county, the taxpayers, and those above that, it's actually a benefit to the county. So, I think that's something we need to keep in mind, too. But, I just would like to reiterate that these changes, that happen so fast and so many times, it's hard for everybody to keep up with it. We need to find something, a common ground, that everybody can agree on, and let's work on that, and focus on that. I appreciate your time, I know it's been a long night, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak against?
I'm Brian Keely, and I'm at 746 Stowe Road in the Clover School District, in 29710. Ladies and gentlemen of the county council, I just wanted to ask that the county council reconsider the restrictions that the current zoning regulations place on developers that make the one-plus-acre lots and subdivisions. These developers do the best to make the subdivision with larger lots. With the new restrictions for development, it makes the land in the urban service area just about unattainable for lower-density subdivisions. Please take a second look at the new guidelines before approving, you know, this new rewrite. There are a lot of people looking to obtain one-plus-acre lots in this county, please not cause the one-plus-acre developers to stop creating cups of subdivisions here and go elsewhere. Thank you again for my concern.
Move to close.
Second.
We have a motion in the second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. We do not have a vote on that tonight. This was purely for public hearing purposes. Counsel to hold a public hearing of an ordinance to amend York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter Thirty-One, County Policies, Section Thirty-One, Point Oh-One, Rates, Fees, and Charges for Zoning Appeals, Applications for Variances, Rezoning Requests, Permits, Inspections, Plan Reviews, and Other Applications, Procedures, and Services rendered by the York County Planning and Development Department and the York County Engineering Department to retitle the section Land Development Fee Schedule, to create fees for new procedures pursuant to revisions to the zoning code and land development code, to revise and reorder the fee table and table notes to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion in second to close public hearing, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter One-Fifty, Building Regulations in its entirety to incorporate certain provisions of the International Building Code, International Residential Code, National Electrical Code, International Fuel-Gas Code, International Plumbing Code, International Mechanical Code, International Energy Conservation Code, and international existing building code as modified and adopted by the South Carolina Building Codes. Counsel for mandatory enforcement by all jurisdictions within the state of South Carolina to reorder, clarify, and restate the provisions of the existing building regulations, including inter alia the application for, application procedures, compliance requirements, and fees for building permits, their scope, revocation, expiration, and terminations, the inspection procedures for construction and certificates of occupancy, the administration and enforcement requirements for this chapter, the powers and enforcement, the powers and duties of the building official, including but not limited to rights of entry, the issuance of stop-work orders, and the provision of alternative materials and design, variances and appeals related to the chapter, the Building Appeals Board, its membership, powers, procedures, and related duties and authority, and the penalties and potential remedies for the violations of this chapter, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Whew. I started to lose my place, and then I was getting nervous. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion in a second to close, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve third reading.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. I put my glasses on. Counsel to hold a public hearing and provide third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between York County, South Carolina, and PDM US LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, a company previously identified to the county as Project Walker with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes and other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor?
My name is Carol Williams, 640 Silver River Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina, 29730. I am here to represent the company PDM US, and to thank both the council and York County Economic Development Team for your support of our business growth in York County. While I am here to represent PDM as CFO, I am also a York County resident. If you had asked me about six months ago where my next CFO job would be, I would have told you it'd be in Charlotte, North Carolina, and living out in McConnell's, that's quite a commute. However, because of York County's support of the growing businesses, I was able to join PDM's team a little over four months ago as their first CFO. It was a new position that they created because of their growth, and because I was able to join them, and I did not have to commute to Charlotte, so it gave me a very competitive job locally. And again, it's because of your support of growing businesses in York County. So PDM is an Italian-owned company, and could have located anywhere else in the U.S. as they came over. In 2013, however, they chose to relocate to Rock Hill. Your continued support of growing businesses is allowing PDM to continue to give jobs to residents in York County, just like me, and to grow and have that opportunity. So we thank you very much for your support, and as we continue to grow our operations in the county.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion in a second to close, any discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Aldet.
Yeah, real quick, first of all, I thank you for that, your comments there. You know, as, as we move forward from an economic development, we're seeing the opportunities grow, whether it's in Fort Mill, you're looking at Rock Hill, any parts of York County, again, the push to keep jobs and create jobs in this area is critical. So, I'm glad to hear that, that good news there, and again, there's a lot of new jobs that are opening up in York County. People are looking, we're gonna be able to keep people working in York County, and keeping them from having to drive across the border. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of closing public hearings say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you again for your continued investment in York County, we appreciate you. We move to old business. Counsel to consider amending third reading of an ordinance to redistrict and redefine the voting districts within York County through reapportionment as to population of the seven single-member electoral districts within the county for the election of members of York County Council pursuant to the United States Census of 2020, and in compliance with Section Four-Dash-Nine-Dash-Ninety of the South Carolina Code of Laws, nineteen seventy-six, as amended. To amend Section Eleven Point Oh Four of the York County Code to codify the block information pertaining to the new districting, and to adopt the conforming redistricting map, and to provide for other matters relating to the redistricting and reapportionment of county council districts in York County.
Move to approve third reading of the redistricting ordinance with the amendment before council this evening, bringing the five census blocks to the north of the Calabash Branch, back into District Two, I'm taking some of my people back from District Three, Robert, and correspondingly adjusting and adopting the revised map and census block information to reflect the boundary change, with all other aspects of the redistricting plan and block information approved at second reading remaining the same.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
So, it was just important that we kept the town of Clover in District Two, and not have a little bit hanging out there, and we just discovered between the last reading and tonight, that about two hundred and forty-five people were, would have been outlying the District Two map, but still in the town of Clover. So this moves the five census blocks located north of the Calabash Branch back into District Two, and it's two hundred and forty-five people that we're talking about.
Mr. Winkler.
I'll just say, I was giving Councilmember Love a hard time earlier, and told her, "I don't think this meeting's gonna go on long enough tonight", so I was gonna oppose giving her those two hundred and forty-five back, just to try to stand it a little bit. But when we worked out these agreements, we both understood in the beginning that she was gonna have all of the municipal limits of Clover, and we just had a little oversight in our lines there, so I support this tonight.
Thank you, Bob.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We now move to new business, which is number thirteen in consent. Counsel to approve a reimbursement agreement with Dr. Horton totaling approximately three hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars for upsizing the water and sewer infrastructure.
So I requested to pull this out, just because I wanted some clarification on it. I'd like to make a motion to approve for discussion purposes, only because I'd like to hear from staff as to why we're allocating three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to Dr. Horton for a sewer expansion, and anytime we're spending this amount of money, and it's going towards something it appears that is only necessary due to Dr. Horton's construction, I just want to make sure we're being transparent, and everyone understands why it is that we're giving Dr. Horton three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars to, which is a national builder. So, if we could have some... So, if we could have some explanation, I think we'd all appreciate it.
Yeah, and I can speak generally.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
I can speak generally on that, although I may defer to Mike if we have specifics. But typically, when we have a system that's being installed, if there's some benefit to the county for future users to upsize that line and make it larger, in other words, D.R. Horton couldn't install one size for their development, but if it's strategically located to where we may use it in the future and need additional capacity, then we will pay, we will pay the difference between what they would have to spend for their development and what we would need for future development. And I think that's pretty common agreement for us to enter into with developers for both water and sewer. But again, that's kind of a general statement. Mike, have you had anything more specific to that particular project?
I do. What it's going to do is upsize the, the lines where you see the 996-liner feet of PVC water line. That's going to be upsized from 12 inches to 20 inches. The 2362-liner feet of DIP water line from 12 to 20 inches. And then the Allison Creek Sewer will be eight inches to 12 inches. That will allow the county in the future to extend water and sewer out to Highway 49 close to the Crowder's Creek Bridge. So essentially, what the, what the developer needed was the smaller amounts, and then this will allow us to expand and, and move additional water and sewer in the future out to future areas of development. And this is Phase Two of the development. Previously, Phase One had been approved in December of 20 for Phase One of this development.
Is there any planned development that will connect into this line that would require the additional capacity at this time?
At this time, I'm not aware of any. I, I know that we're looking at, you know, future growth downstream. The engineering department has looked at this, and they're looking at the option to extend this, as I mentioned, out 49, close to the Crowder's Creek Bridge further north. But I'm not aware of a specific development, because Phase Two, as I understand it, is the last of this Westport residential development.
So, I just wanted, that was basically my question. I wanted to be clear that, you know, basically the inverse wasn't occurring, that we're not paying D.R. Horton for additional capacity that's due to their development, but that they're paying for the capacity that, that's required of them, and that this, any additional cost is related to development or to the county's benefit and not to D.R. Horton's benefit.
In this case, that's exactly the case. And the county won't reimburse until construction's actually complete, and construction will be 15 to 18 months from now, as I understand it.
And I'll just say, I would imagine that in the long run, this probably saves the county some money if we want to stand or enlarge in the future. It's much more expensive to dig up all the old stuff and put new down than it is to pay for the new stuff, the larger stuff to go in while the, the ground's open, so.
The county in this case is paying for the differential between what the developer needs and what we project in the future.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We now move to council member new non-agenda comments. Who's raising their hand? Mr. Winkler?
Okay. I'll just say, again, it's, it's kind of non-agenda, but it's kind of agenda. Just good to see everybody out participating tonight. Many times we do this before, an empty house where you can hear crickets when we're voting on important stuff, so it's good to have everybody out tonight, so.
Yeah, I'd also like to second where Robert said, "Thank you for being out tonight. We truly appreciate this." I do want to give a quick shout out to the Nation Ford High School. This weekend, the, the JROTC rifle team was shooting in the national championship in Phoenix, Arizona, and they won the championship. So again, just want to share that with y'all. Good news.
And I, and I believe there needs to be a small shout out to Councilmember Aldet's child for being a big part of that.
Oh, yeah. Proud of my daughter. There you go.
Any other council members?
I'm taking a night off.
Wow. I'm impressed. I do have one thing, just to let council know that it is kind of my intention that there's an issue with recode. Just to be transparent, I have asked for staff to look into how to correct what I believe is, is something that council tried to correct early on with event centers, allowing an agriturism exception or those that have, that only operate as a, not as a commercial business, to make sure that we find a way to carve out that exemption. And I know that there were other council members who supported that, but I did want y'all to know that, that was being raised as part of the revisions that we're making to recode. At this time, we move to citizen concerns, which is the portion of our agenda where we allow folks and citizens to come and appear before the council to provide comments and information. Usually, it's not this long, so kudos to y'all. You have waited a long time to, to be here, and, and our meetings don't typically last this long. Just to let you know, this, this forum is not a time to engage with council. It's an opportunity that we provide for us to listen to you, so we will not respond to you. We don't answer questions. We simply listen to you as you come forward. I would ask that, just to remind you that you keep your comments to 10 minutes, and if we refrain from personal or directed comments or attacks, since no one's allowed to respond to that, then we request that you not do that. And with specific reference to this issue that's coming before us, just to be clear, on advice of legal, county council does not comment on ongoing litigation matters and allow that to go through the court. So at this time, if the representatives from Morningstar Ministry would like to come forward to present their information.
I'm Dave Yarns. I'm the vice president of Morningstar Ministry. I provide my time.
Rick Joyner. And if I can turn your attention to this PowerPoint. Is this, please don't take this time against me. There we go. So, on behalf of Morningstar, you know, our 160 residents, our 103 employees, and tens of thousands of supporters, we're here, thank you for that. I want to thank you guys for all coming out, all of our Morningstar people. Really appreciate it. Morningstar enacted a mutual dismissal with all y'all on August 34th of 2020 in a lawsuit that you spent, York County spent $330,000, and it benefited no one. There was zero outcome after 10 years. Morningstar agreed to dismiss three of its lawsuits, and your county attorney at that time said it makes sense for both of our clients to quit spending money. Since the mutual dismissal, we believe you guys were acting in good faith, and we began to make significant expenditures after that. We hired Zygular Financial. We received a $75 million tax exempt bond from the state of South Carolina. We retained Hanler, Hanler Sinclair and Boyd. They wrote the book on bond funding. We had 60 subcontractors come through the building, look at every single side. We've x-rayed all the members of that building, provided significant engineering analysis to it, and we had the preliminary selection of J.E. Dunn, the number one high-rise builder in all of the area. Here's our team from Morningstar. It's not just Rick and myself. You'll see some of the most incredible professionals that are involved in this type of development have signed on with us. Morningstar was blindsided on Au, on August 30th, when your county attorney, Michael Kendry, moved to have a lawsuit reinstated that cost the, the citizens of this county $330,000. There was no notice given to Morningstar. There was no notice given to, even to your former attorney. There was no acknowledgement of the bond issue. There was simply, at the last hour, the very 365th day that this could take place, even Keith Martin said he wasn't notified. It's an outrage. The proposed reinstatement absolutely ground everything we were doing to a halt. On the 28th, we met with the good folks of York County to sit down to try to discuss this. You see the names that were on there. We were petitioning them to immediately reverse that decision, to stop further litigation, and ask, and ask us any questions, dispel any misconceptions about the project. We believe that all the parties were acting in good faith to stay litigation. We reached out to them, and on November 9th, Morningstar sent additional letters without any response or even a courtesy call. I want you guys to hear that as a council. Even if you, even if you don't have respect for us as a ministry, that we have not been afforded, the common courtesies that you would give to other developers. Now, as of January 19th, York County again has petitioned to reinstate a costly lawsuit that benefits no one and has no end in sight. We believe this is part of our religious mandate to see that restored. Does, a common question, does Morningstar want to comply with York County? We've done $15 million worth of development, and we've submitted plans and building permits on every single piece. Your staff can attest to that. We've had everything from our Bob Jones Vision Center to our gym, to all of our units inspected by York County. We welcome your involvement. This is a tricky project. We're looking forward to it. Is the tower structurally sound? 218, 214, 218. We've x-rayed members. We've taken into consideration numerous facts. Various professionals have looked at it. Yes, it's structurally sound. Morningstar has the money to finish it. Could we have done more to beautify it? No. We put a petition in. We put a building permit in to change the outside, and your planning department said no restorative activities could be done for that building. There's absolutely no way for us to restore it further. Do we have background in it? Absolutely. We have 500,000 square feet of restored space that you guys have helped us oversee. We have 164 residents. There's our campus. We're resolved that we need an explanation from York County on why you guys are so intent. And after relying on this good faith dismissal, we have incurred significant damages. I'd like to bring a word from our president, Rick Joyner.
Every time I come before this county council, I get more impressed with the tough job you guys have, and we do appreciate it. And we've tried to be good citizens. We've tried to work with the York County in every way we knew to do it. We have investigated and found out that we're being treated very differently than other developers. We need some explanation to that. We're here tonight to try to stop what is going to be escalating much more expensive, very ugly litigation. We don't want to go there. We have no choice. We're losing a lot by the day because of this activity. We can't understand, nobody seems to understand it or be able to explain to us, why are you trying to prevent us from developing our own property? There are state and federal laws that prohibit this from any government entity from doing this. We believe they're being violated, and we're going to press that issue going forward. Now, as Dave expressed, we were shocked. You know, we think we've done everything that we could to be a good, not only a good neighbor, but a good developer. Honoring, safety is our, you know, number one priority. I'm going to be living in that building. I wouldn't build something I wouldn't be willing to live in. Many of our people, though, have passed away waiting to live in that building. Why? Why has this gone on for over 10 years? And now we have a whole new round that is obviously going to escalate. So, you know, I think you need to answer. We elected you, and I think we did a good job sitting here tonight. I would say the people elected you knew what they were doing. I think we've got some pretty good people up there. But we elected you to run the county, not the county councilor, not, or the county attorney, or the county staff. That's your job. Somehow, it looks like, though, there's a disconnect. And we need some explanations, and we need a dismissal of that lawsuit that we both mutually agreed to dismiss and that was brought up last day, last hour by your attorney, obviously to keep us from even responding to it. And what we found, we couldn't find anyone that knew why it had happened or even knew that it had happened. So, who's running the county? I think we've got some good people that can do a good job. I think a great job's been done for our county. But why is this issue with us? We found many things, many ways that we're being treated differently from any other developer. Is it religious discrimination? We think we've got some evidence to that effect, and that's what we're going to be pressing, but we don't want to go there. We're going to have to go there if we go to this new round. We're going to have to go into a lot of other areas we don't want to go into. So, we're here tonight to ask you to take, like, the 330,000 the county's already spent on legal fees that I think Dave's right, who did that benefit? What could have benefited Mr. Brown here and that kind of thing, far more than just wasting on legal fees? Guess what? We're losing a lot too. You know, we're having to spend our own. And why? So, we're asking you to vote on an immediate dismissal of that lawsuit, and if you can come out, we would invite all of you to come out. Do all the investigating you want. We'll talk to you about anything. Our books are open. We've always been that way. We're an open book ministry. We don't hide anything. And, but we believe we have been treated very shabbily, and more than that, we believe we have been discriminated against. That's a serious matter. That's a serious matter in America. Not only are there violation of state and federal laws, this is a constitutional violation of our basic rights. There's not supposed to be churches being treated one way and everybody else another. Now, so, if we want to go that way, if you want to go that way, you know, we'll be into it real quick, because we don't have any time to wait going forward. We can't take another two weeks. We're losing money by the day. We've got to engage. So, you know, you need to make a quick decision and a quick dismissal, or it's going to be all-out war. And, you know, if we have to do it, we will do it, but we will not go away, and we will not quit. I don't care how long it's going to take. That building was estimated to be worth $15 million as it sits when we bought the property. Now, it's worth a lot more, they say. We've had engineers, check it out, engineers, of course, when the situation happened with the Florida building, everybody go, oh no, you know, safety of buildings, you know, we got onto it. I think that was, you know, a terrible tragedy that happened there, but it woke everybody up to how much safer we've got to build our buildings. But we have to admit, there are probably millions of buildings in the country that have not fallen down like that one. Ours, according to all the engineering studies, was built years ahead of its time in its engineering. It is still, according to our last study done by engineers who put their name and their stamp on it, some of the best in the country, they said this building is still in amazing shape, worth more than 20 million now. We're not going to let that be torn down. That isn't going to happen. We will finish it. How much pain is it going to cost both sides for us to get there? We want to be, you know, best friends with our local government. We don't want to be in a war like this, but that's where we're headed. And we need some understanding. We need some explanation, and we need action on the part of you that we elected to run our county, to dismiss this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner.
This time, I move that we move into executive session for the following reasons. One is for the receipt of legal advice relating to a contractual matter regarding county water sewer and a blue granite update. Another reason is for the receipt of legal advice regarding another contractual matter relating to Project Freedom, as well as Project Freedom Two. Also, for the receipt of legal advice relating to another contractual matter regarding municipal jail agreements, and one item that is not on our agenda. And one item that is not on our agenda, an additional executive session item, we need to receive legal advice regarding our Recode. Those are all the reasons to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will take five minutes and move into executive session. We are out of executive session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
We have one motion. Uh, that motion is to authorize legal to execute contracts relating to Project Freedom One and Freedom Two upon the review and approval by the county attorney.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, uh, motion is approved.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second. All, all in favor say aye.
Aye.